Okay, welcome everybody. Today is Tuesday, August 8, 2017. This is a special meeting at the City of Moore Bay located at the Vets Hall. This particular special meeting to review our Marijuana Council Subcommittee recommendations and considerations of a future marijuana regulation. So just as a course of business, just recognize that all council members are present. We do have a quorum and we'll call the meeting to order. And so a little preface here, I know there's been some questions. This is a special meeting to discuss the potential regulations for marijuana within the City of Moore Bay. It's also on our City Council meeting later tonight. So we're going to open it up for public comment. We're going to have council discussions. We'll have our Subcommittee presentations, staff conversations as well. We'll conclude about 5:30 and then we'll go into our regular City Council meeting. And then our regular City Council meeting will agendize this item as well and we'll have that discussion and take a course of action. So at the regular City Council meeting, I'll just be mindful of kind of some redundancy on public comment and would hopefully, you know, get all that taken care of now. Not going to prohibit public comment at that time at all, but we're just trying to cover some of the more robust discussion for the sake of time earlier in the day is why we called the special meeting. So with that, having been outlined that, I'm going to turn it over to introduce this item to our Assistant City Attorney, Chris Newmeyer. And then we have our Subcommittee members that will help lead us with that as well. So, Chris, take it away.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, City staff, members of the public. Today, I'm going to provide a presentation of recommendations from the Marijuana Council Subcommittee and also talk about what that means for local marijuana regulations. So as the Council knows and the public knows, there've been a number of workshops and a number of presentations prior. And so now we're getting down to what a local ordinance would look like. And that's going to be the focus of today's presentation. So the topics for discussion are, first of all, the direction that is being sought from Council, which will consist of four different areas of direction. One, involving public smoking. Two, personal cultivation. Three, commercial operations. And then four, possible taxes and fees. And each of these will be discussed in greater detail. Second, we're going to go over fiscal impact of both Proposition 64 and what that means for the city in terms of local revenue opportunities and recouping fees. Three, briefly go over the background, recent city actions. Four, we're going to talk about one of the areas that the city can regulate or else it defaults to state standards, which is personal marijuana use. And there's two areas that the city has some control over. Within the context of Proposition 64 has made it legal statewide, of course, to possess up to an ounce of cannabis or marijuana, to use cannabis or marijuana, and to cultivate in a limited fashion. The city does have control over public marijuana use, i.e. smoking regulations. And we'll go into that. We'll also talk about personal marijuana cultivation, which is both indoor and outdoor that the city can consider regulating. Fifth, we'll talk about commercial marijuana use in regards to a local ordinance. There are the basic areas of businesses of dispensaries or retail sales, commercial cultivation, manufacturing and testing, and then deliveries. And the key here is that the city can prohibit all of these commercial businesses, allow some and prohibit others, or allow all of them. And so every city in California has this choice on whether they want to allow some or all of these businesses or ban them all. And that's just something that cities are being encouraged to look into before 2018 when the state starts issuing licenses for these businesses. Six, a recommended timeline on the city producing an ordinance. And then seven, and this is going to be hopefully decisions that will be considered at the later meeting today. We have a list of, an itemization of the recommendations from the Marijuana Council Subcommittee, where we just go one by one through the different components that are being recommended for an ordinance. And so hopefully that can lead to a good discussion on whether the Council and the Mayor agree with those recommendations or not. So first fiscal impact. Proposition 64 has changed the financial landscape of both medical and adult use or recreational marijuana throughout the state. First of all, there will be a 15% excise tax imposed by the state, starting in 2018, on all marijuana sales. So that's both medical and recreational or adult use. There'll also be a cultivation tax that will be imposed statewide, and the state will also collect that. And interestingly, medical marijuana or medical cannabis will be exempt from state sales tax. So often the question is asked, why would anybody have medical marijuana facilities, dispensaries, et cetera? You know, why not just have the adult use or recreational? One, you're eligible to be exempt from state sales tax. Another answer to that question is that under Prop 64, for adult use marijuana, you can possess up to an ounce legally. For medical, with a doctor's recommendation, you can possess more than an ounce. So there's two solid reasons right there why the medical business will continue in the state, notwithstanding recreational adult use. State grants. And by the way, this PowerPoint here just follows point by point the staff report, so if you go through either of those, it's the same outline. State grants, with the 15% excise tax that will be levied across the state on marijuana sales and with the cultivation tax, the State Legislative Analyst Office estimates that there'll be a few hundred million to a billion dollars generated in local and state revenue. Some of that will be available through state grants to local jurisdictions for use in enforcement and ensuring that there are not health and safety issues that are resulting from the implementation of Prop 64. It's very hard to estimate how much money will be available to a city that's eligible for these grants. A very, very rough estimate is anywhere from maybe $50,000 to $125,000. But we don't know how much money the state's going to generate in the revenue. And there are many, many other earmarks that this money is dedicated towards. And also, a big variable is that a city is not eligible for these state grants if they ban cultivation or retail sales. And so obviously, with about 470 cities in California, most of them, or at least a lot of them, will probably not be eligible in the first place, so that makes more available to the cities that are eligible for the grants. But we're just going to have to wait and see how much cities are actually going to be getting through this. But of course, you know, it would be nice to have a little bit of extra money to deal with the Prop 64 impacts. Which brings me to local finances. Proposition 64, which of course legalized adult use recreational marijuana throughout the state, and the Medical Marijuana Regulation and Safety Act, which has tried to regulate and strengthen medical marijuana, has prompted a lot of cities, both previously and now, to look into local taxes on marijuana sales, on marijuana cultivation, on just different marijuana businesses. If Moore Bay or any other city wants to impose a tax on marijuana commercial activities, you would need voter approval, of course. There are a lot of different ranges on the taxes, but generally, cities have been imposing taxes on the gross receipts of retail sales. For various reasons, you can't be imposing a local sales tax on one specific item. Or they impose on a cultivation tax where you might have $15 per square foot, $25 per square foot, et cetera. My office has worked with a few cities to develop local taxes, so if the city was interested in that, we certainly could work with the city on that. The amount of money generated from local taxes is speculative. You can't just say, "One city raised X amount of dollars, therefore my city will." It depends upon the local demand, the local market. There's a lot of factors that go into it. So if the Council wanted to explore that further, I could provide more information.
So, Chris, I just want to make sure as we go, if there's any questions during different segments, I just want to take a pause and, along the way, just look to my left or right and just make sure if there's any questions along the way, that everybody just kind of either gets it now or we get it at the end and just want to check in.
If I can go back to this state grants available, but you cannot ban cultivation or retail sales, is that both medical and adult use recreation? Or could you ban one and not the other and still have retail sales?
That's a really good question, and we don't have a clear answer right now. Proposition 64 just says that cities that prohibit retail or cultivation are not eligible. Whether that means you need to allow some retail and some cultivation and you're still eligible, or whether you need to allow all of it is unclear. Proposition 64, of course, was written by, you know, advocates for Prop 64, and it's over 100 pages of changes to state law, but it didn't come out of Sacramento. It didn't go through the Assembly or the Senate, so we don't have legislative analysis. We didn't have Subcommittee reports. So the courts are going to have to figure out what that means.
Thank you. Any other questions? I know you might have covered this, so sorry if I missed this, but on the state taxes at 15%, none of that goes to local jurisdictions. The only, I just want to, that's the question, and then the local taxes that are imposed are solely for local jurisdictions, is that correct?
Yes. The only part of the state excise tax are these grants that are unclear how much they'll be. And of course, you can't ban cultivation or retail sales to get them.
So the 15%, there's not a portion of the 15% that's distributed to local jurisdictions?
There is not, no, there is not.
Yeah, just wanted, thanks.
And then local taxes, of course, if the city passes it, it would be the equivalent of like, say, passing utility users' tax or a TOT tax, where, you know, the money is collected by the city and stays with the city.
I think we got one more question.
Yes, Chris, in terms of that local tax, and there's two different options in terms of percentage of voter passage that we would need, correct?
Yes. The details get a little complicated, but simply put, if the city were to propose a general tax, which means all the money goes into the general fund, it can be used for any purpose, then you need 50% plus one voter approval. If it's a special tax, which means it's earmarked to special items like just police or just fire, and it can only be used for those, then you need 2/3 approval. And then there's further restrictions on the election than you can send these taxes to as well. A general tax, unless a fiscal emergency is declared, must be on the ballot when council members are on the ballot. A special tax can be called at any election, but you need the 2/3. However, if the city declares a fiscal emergency, then that general tax, which only needs 50% and can go to anything, can be on any election. But again, we can, our office or I could produce further memorandum for the Council on tax options if you're interested in the details and how to roll it out.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
Sure. The second part of local finances that cities are starting to explore is the use of a development agreement. Now, a development agreement is a California statutorily approved contract between the city and a land use development. And it's between the city and a property owner. And what it is, is basically the city agreeing to guarantee certain land use regulations for a set amount of time, five, 10 years perhaps. And in exchange, the developer has certainty about what they're doing with their property. And with that, the city can also recoup fees from the development that isn't subject to voter approval. And so we've seen a couple of cities exploring the use of development agreements for cannabis marijuana businesses. It's not applicable necessarily to all commercial operations because there needs to be some type of land development that's occurring. In its minimal application, it could possibly be used for a retail operation, but it would need to be with the property owner, or at least someone with an equitable interest in the property, which is not your typical renter of a storefront. And again, that's something that our office could explore further with the Council if there's some interest in doing a development agreement. The third area of local finances that's important to consider is fees. And this is perhaps the simplest area of local finances. Basically, the city's entitled to recoup any fees that it spends, any costs, on administering or regulating really any business in the city, including marijuana businesses. So if the city were to allow, say, a few marijuana retail outlets, and the city were to have a requirement that twice a year, there's an audit of the books of that operation, and the city is going to be spending $15,000 per audit, the city can pass that cost on to the business, the cost of operating that regulation. If the city's going to have inspections done by code enforcement or a fire department or police department of dispensaries or cultivation sites or, you know, any operation in the city, again, whatever the costs are, the city can pass it on through fees. To give you an example of the amount of fees that can be lawfully recouped by simply passing a fee resolution, Oakland, for many years now, has been charging about $60,000 a year to each of its medical marijuana dispensaries to cover all the costs of city regulation. So it varies from city to city how much, you know, the fees are, but if the city can justify the cost because it's a regulatory issue, then they can recover those fees. So that's fiscal impact. Background, recent city actions. January 2017, there was a presentation to the City Council on Prop 64. In March, educational workshop was held and the Council Subcommittee was formed. On April, there was Council direction for a community forum. June, a community forum was held with members of the public. In July, the Council Subcommittee met twice. And then today, we're presenting the Subcommittee's recommendations and seeking direction for further local regulations. And just as a side note, I am not only the Assistant City Attorney for Moore Bay, but I also work with all of our municipal clients on marijuana regulations. And I'm very impressed with how thorough Moore Bay has been with looking into these issues, and it's evident by the actions that are taken here. So, you know, my hat's off to you all for all of the comprehensive efforts here. Which brings me now to the issues that the Subcommittee and staff are asking for the Council to consider providing direction on. First of all, for personal marijuana use, as I mentioned, there's two main areas the city can regulate. One, public marijuana use, smoking regulations. And two, personal marijuana cultivation. Now, the general rule under Prop 64 is that any existing or prospective law that involves cigarette smoking applies exactly the same to marijuana smoking. And so therefore, any anti-smoking or secondhand smoke regulations the city have, they apply automatically to marijuana smoke. And with that in mind, the Moore Bay Municipal Code, Chapter 9.24, Secondhand Smoking Regulations, is already a robust anti-smoking local law. It basically prohibits smoking in public places with some exceptions for private residences and then what are called smoking outposts, where if you're having a private function, it's not open to the general public, you can designate a certain area for allowing smoking. Obviously, when this chapter was passed, I believe it was six, seven years ago by the City Council, it wasn't geared towards marijuana smoking, it was cigarette smoking. But it applies directly to marijuana smoking now. And then also, keep in mind that in Moore Bay, there are state parks, which currently smoking is allowed. So that means that you would not be able to regulate those state parks with a local code. Senate Bill 386 proposing that there'll be prohibitions on smoking in state parks, but also Prop 64 says you can't smoke marijuana in public places anyways. So, you know, the state parks, people are under Prop 64 prohibited from smoking marijuana there anyways.
Chris, I have a question on that. So when you get into the personal marijuana cultivation down below, and as far as outdoor cultivation, you know, we've read some stories in different cities where they went through some of the difficulties with outdoor cultivation, particularly the odor. So how does that take effect when there's smoking regulations, secondhand and smoking regulations, in general public spaces? But what about when you get into neighborhoods and there is a problem there, which kind of leads into the outdoor cultivation and that kind of odor? Is that, what kind of nuisance is there, or how does that, how does that lay out?
Well, local governments can just prohibit outright all outdoor cultivation. If a local-
But as far as the smoking goes, I mean, you know, how does that come in?
Well, the smoking in your, in a private place is allowed, but if it becomes a nuisance, then cities can certainly put an end to it. I mean, you know, there, it can, you can't, you can't smoke in a way where it's going to create a nuisance to your neighbors. So if there's heavy cigar smoking, marijuana smoking, cigarette smoking in someone's backyard, someone could certainly complain to the city that it's creating a nuisance. But your question is the odor from growing the plants?
Well, I guess if there are complaints, which is why I asked the question.
Yeah.
What's going to help, you know, that neighbor in that situation if there's nothing that prohibits that or helps?
You mean for the smoking?
If there's a nuisance, yeah, yeah.
Well, the city could tell them that they're in violation of the local law in regards to public nuisance. I mean, if there's excessive smoking, if they don't like the smell.
Okay. I can probably ask a little bit more later, but that's good, thanks. Anybody else? No? Okay, thanks.
Sure. So for smoking regulations, like I was saying, it's a matter of realizing that now it's just like prohibiting tobacco smoke, same thing applies. If you can prohibit tobacco smoke, you can prohibit marijuana smoke. Otherwise, it's something that people can do in the privacy of their homes. And the Subcommittee recommendation is to maintain the local smoking prohibitions and possibly consider expanding the local smoking prohibitions. Noticeably, there's one exception in the current Chapter 9.24, which talks about how you can smoke in a public place if reasonably there isn't going to be someone else there. So that might be worth looking into, whether the city wants to tighten that up or just leave it as it is. Personal marijuana cultivation. This is one of the few areas of personal marijuana use that Proposition 64 does leave the local control. Right now, under Prop 64, as I mentioned, statewide, it's legal to possess up to an ounce of marijuana, to use marijuana. And also, you can cultivate up to six marijuana plants at your personal residence. However, there's a difference between outside cultivation and indoor cultivation. While you have the right to grow six plants at your home, cities can prohibit it from being done outside. As for indoor cultivation, cities can't prohibit it, but they can impose reasonable regulations. And again, and like in response to the question on state grants that Councilwoman McPherson asked, what is a reasonable regulation? The only guidance we have is the word reasonable. That's all Prop 64 says, is the regulations seem to be reasonable. There have been some speculation by different cities that a reasonable regulations would be to obviously focus on health and safety aspects, you know, perhaps to require a permit. I can say that in June, the City of Fontana in the Inland Empire has been sued by the ACLU for having what they claim to be unreasonable regulations. What Fontana was requiring was what the suit claims to be intrusive, regular inspections. They had to have a completely clean city record with no code enforcement actions, they couldn't have any felonies. There were a lot, there was a lot laid on top of it that arguably wasn't just health and safety, but it's all debatable until the court sort out what's reasonable. So right now, the Moore Bay Municipal Code is silent.
Chris, I think we got one more question after.
And Chris, I do have a question about the indoor regulation, specifically when you say reasonable. And I, and I know this will come out down the line, but in terms of, say for instance, multi-dwelling apartments, reasonable safety, do our cities, does that reasonable protect a city, say for us, to, not necessarily control, but just to make sure that if there are multi-appartments in, say for instance, in an apartment complex, that we make it safe? How would that work? Would we have to specifically say, in an apartment dwelling, if this were happening, they would have to have XYZ to cover it?
Well, for sure, the law clarifies that a personal residence includes apartment units, apartment dwellings. So if you had a 20-unit apartment building, then each unit would be entitled to grow six plants. Now, if there are heightened health and safety concerns because of the concentration of people in that building, then I would think it's reasonable to say it's reasonable to regulate at a heightened, more heightened regulations for that concentration, as opposed to maybe, you know, a personal residence that has plenty of open space between the dwelling and the neighboring dwellings. Certainly, the easiest approach would be to apply the same standards across the board to everyone. And I know some cities are waiting to see what happens with that lawsuit in Fontana and to see what other lawsuits come up, and are looking for kind of a middle-of-the-road approach where folks, you know, get a permit, the city has some regulations, but it's not too intrusive. But yeah, we could have higher standards for more concentrated dwellings, I would think.
What I would also add as a Committee recommendation is to have property owner permission before they allow indoor cultivation for tenants.
Okay, that's a, that's a good question. Thanks for the follow-up, Marty. In terms of, does that right to have six plants indoors is to the property owner and not necessarily to the tenants?
The Prop 64 is not crystal clear on that. However, I believe that it would be, I would believe that a property owner could definitely restrict their tenants to not growing at their property if that's what the landlord wanted to do. It would be the equivalent of a landlord saying that you can't smoke cigarettes in my rental unit, you can't have a 100-gallon aquarium in my rental unit, you can't have dogs or cats. It would just be a matter of them protecting their real estate property. So I think it'd be reasonable for a landlord to just say there's no smoking, or there's no indoor gardens.
And then I guess, does it follow then that would the city alert landlords in that case, saying, hey, here are the regulations, reasonable, and then we leave it on to you to do something, come up with your own restrictions?
That would be one option.
Okay.
Marlese, did you have a question?
Well, it was already just answered. Thank you.
Thank you.
So for personal marijuana cultivation, as I mentioned, the city can ban all outdoor and it can regulate indoor. Right now, Moore Bay Municipal Code, just across the board, prohibits all marijuana cultivation, which acts to make outdoor right now unlawful. So if the city were to allow or wanted to allow outdoor personal cultivation, that would require change in the local law. And right now, of course, there are no regulations on indoor because that just became the law recently. There would be no reason to regulate indoor cultivation. The Subcommittee's recommending maintaining the current outdoor cultivation ban and then require a permit and follow some reasonable regulations for indoor cultivation. And I'll get into some more of the details of that when I get to that itemized list at the end of the presentation. So now we have the four types of commercial marijuana uses that cities can allow or prohibit any or all of these. The first one is dispensaries or retail sales. So Moore Bay law right now prohibits medical marijuana dispensaries. It's silent on recreational or adult-use dispensaries. There's an argument to be made that the current code does prohibit recreational or adult-use dispensaries, but I would suggest that once the City Council decides whether it wants to allow them or not, we just clean up the code and make it crystal clear on which way the Council wants to go. As I mentioned before, in 2018, there'll be state dispensary licenses available. And local control is that cities can prohibit or allow dispensaries, and that includes prohibiting or allowing individually medical and adult use. So a city can allow a medical marijuana retail stores, but prohibit adult-use retail. It could also do the opposite, or it could allow both. And now is, I think, a good time to briefly mention SB 94, Senate Bill 94, which was recently signed by Governor Brown and became law immediately at the end of June. There have, of course, been a lot of discussion already here at the workshops, presentations and whatnot, about Prop 64, which governs adult use and recreational, and then the Medical Marijuana Regulation and Safety Act, which governs medical. What SB 94 did, Senate Bill 94- What SB 94 did, Senate Bill 94, which is the law now, is an urgency item, it merges the two regulatory structures. And so it actually streamlines them to the extent where now there's just 20 different license types the state will be issuing in 2018. And you either get an A on it for adult use or an M for medical use. It also strengthens some of the regulations, uh, and it added, again, over 100 pages of regulations to state law. But the long and the short of it is, is that it's merged medical and adult use into one regulatory regime that will be governed by the Bureau of Cannabis Control from Sacramento. And, uh, of course, there's a lot more details in the regulations, but... So the reason why I bring that up now with dispensaries is that if the city wants to allow medical dispensaries but not adult use, then it would allow, uh, state licenses to be issued with Ms. on them instead of As. And that's just the difference now for state licenses. And a failure to address dispensaries reasonably will allow someone who gets a state license to operate in the city. And that's important to know, and that's why cities all up and down the state are now dealing with this, because what Prop 64 did was it normalized, uh, marijuana and marijuana businesses. And so, uh, it's harder, it's going to be a lot harder for cities to rely upon the concept of that if they don't openly allow it, then it's prohibited. Because now, uh, both retail sale of marijuana and agricultural has been normalized into law. It's considered just like any other retail or agricultural use. The Subcommittee expressed some concerns about edibles. If the city were to allow retail sales of marijuana products, uh, there was concern about, uh, both minors consuming edibles and then mistaken consumption. Now, edibles, of course, are when you have a marijuana-infused edible product, like a cookie or a biscuit or, um, you know, chocolate. And there's a concern, uh, the Subcommittee expressed, about, again, children or mistaken consumption. And so, I'll get to some of the Subcommittee recommendations, but basically, they wanted to have stronger edible regulations than the state already provides, or at least take a strong look at what the state's doing and see if it's enough.
We have a question?
Chris, do you know whether or not the state is developing standards to govern edibles and the packaging?
Uh, yes, the state is supposed to be developing, uh, standards for edibles. Specifically, SB 94, one of the big changes it made was that it's going to require a universal edible symbol that every edible in the state is supposed to have on it when it's lawfully sold. So I don't know what the symbol's going to be, but it's supposed to be something that's recognizable. Uh, also, they're supposed to be sold in opaque packaging, non-seethrough packaging. So those are two of the changes that SB 94 brought about. And then there's supposed to be further regulations developed on regulation of edibles.
Would those further regulations have to do with potency? Standardization of potency for edibles?
Uh, it's not required, but I would like to think that they would, but the, one of the problems right now with marijuana edibles and just marijuana products is that there's not much, uh, um, science that has been done on potency levels. It's hard to even, it's hard to even measure, you know, how potent, uh, marijuana, a marijuana product is, you know? For example, um, law enforcement's struggling right now with, uh, trying to determine how, um, how much marijuana, uh, how impaired a driver is that they know has marijuana in their system, you know? There's no equivalent test like there is for blood alcohol content. Proposition 64 is actually going to be earmarking millions of dollars to two, uh, University California systems to review this, but, um, so the answer to your question is, is that it's certainly within their mandate, but if and when they'll actually be able to accurately say how potent an edible is, that's unknown.
Chris?
Mm-hmm.
A quick question. Is there any language specifically relating to transdermal or across-the-skin products? Creams, oils, um, those kinds of delivery systems?
Uh, that would be a manufactured product. And so, uh, right now, among the 20 different licenses that the state is going to be issuing, there's two different licenses for manufacturing products, which would basically be taking extracts from the marijuana plant and then putting it into both edibles and then creams or ointments. And so, uh, how well those will be regulated, again, the state is still developing those regulations. Thank you. And so, the other issue with dispensaries, as I mentioned, was development agreements. Uh, as I'd mentioned before, it's basically a negotiated contract for land use. Uh, what is attractive about development agreements is that it is a way for, uh, the city to realize extra revenue, uh, which doesn't go to necessarily cover direct costs, but is in a tax that has to be sent to the voters. And so that's something that possibly could be explored. So the Subcommittee's recommendations on dispensaries is to permit two fixed-location medical marijuana dispensaries, prohibit recreational or adult-use cannabis dispensaries, uh, to pursue development agreements. Uh, keep in mind that you can't necessarily impose or require a development agreement, but you can actually, uh, encourage the, you know, land use, um, applicant, the, um, dispensary owner to enter into one. And additional regulations for edible medical marijuana products that are sold. So I've talked about personal use involving both smoking in public and personal cultivation, and now I'm on the second of the four different commercial uses that we're talking about. Uh, one was dispensaries, and now the second one is commercial cultivation. Uh, Morro Bay law, right now, prohibits marijuana cultivation, uh, throughout the city, all zones, with a limited exception for personal medical marijuana. Uh, in 2018, as I mentioned, and this is the same for all of these, uh, commercial uses, uh, there will be state cultivation licenses available. And local control is available, but if a city doesn't expressly address commercial cultivation, then a state license will reasonably allow someone to engage in activity in the city. Right now, Morro Bay does prohibit all cultivation. If Morro Bay wants to prohibit all commercial cultivation, I would encourage, uh, strengthening the code to make it crystal clear to the state that, um, the commercial cultivation is not allowed. Or if it was to allow commercial cultivation, then, you know, we'd develop a code to allow that as well. The Subcommittee's recommendation is to prohibit all commercial marijuana cultivation and to amend the code for consistency, as I just mentioned, with the new state laws. This brings me to the, yes?
No, go ahead.
To the third of the four commercial areas, manufacturing and testing. Uh, there are actually two different types, but I've grouped them together here because they are, uh, two commercial uses which, uh, really have not been that common throughout the state, but now you can get a state license for them and that you will start seeing them throughout the state, these types of businesses. Uh, the Morro Bay law, right now, prohibits what it calls marijuana processing, which is, I think, manufacturing, but again, I would recommend that the code be cleaned up to either specifically allow or disallow marijuana manufacturing. And again, this is the case in almost all cities throughout the state, because until Prop 64 passed, uh, most cities didn't have the need to address this whole new world of commercial marijuana operations. Uh, the Morro Bay Code, right now, is silent on testing. Just as a matter of explanation, uh, the state will be requiring that all commercial cannabis that's sold, both medical and adult use, will be tested for both contaminants and then some level of potency to, uh, address the concern or comment by Councilman Davis. Um, how they're going to test potency is another question. Uh, it's clear that you can measure how much THC, the act, one of the active chemicals in cannabis, is in a product, but, uh, there's many other factors that involve how potent it is. But that's what the testing's going to do, uh, contaminants and then potency. And then, that has to be done before any retail site can actually sell, uh, cannabis. And so, there will be a lot of testing facilities throughout the state. Um, and interestingly, for both manufacturing and testing, uh, some cities are taking the approach of allowing just like, just manufacturing, testing some cultivation sites, but not allowing retail, just to realize revenue for the city. Um, city of Lynnwood in LA County, actually, uh, has been one of the, uh, one of the cities on the frontier of this. Um, they're allowing basically unlimited manufacturing, testing, cultivation sites, but they're not going to allow retail sales, and they have a voter-approved tax as well on top of those. Just like the other commercial businesses, uh, state manufacturing and testing licenses will be available in 2018. And local control, um, city can prohibit or allow them, and failure to address it reasonably will allow those licenses to authorize activity in the city. Subcommittee's recommendations prohibit all manufacturing and testing and amend, uh, city code for consistency with these new state laws. And that finally brings me to deliveries, which is the fourth area of commercial marijuana uses that, uh, we're discussing today. So, Morro Bay law, right now, does not have an express ban on deliveries. However, uh, in 2018, uh, deliveries will become legal with a state retail dispensary license. And what this means is that the city can prohibit or allow deliveries. Uh, they can impose additional regulations if it wants on top of deliveries. Um, and a failure to address this, again, allows arguably deliveries to come into the city. Uh, deliveries is one of the issues that, uh, cities throughout the state have been grappling with, because the reality is, is that deliveries are pretty much probably occurring all throughout the state and just about every city anyways, right now. And so, the question is, is, uh, whether a city is going to attempt to bring that into the sunshine and provide permits or licenses for it. There's also a question in 2018, when state licenses are required for all these commercial activities, what's going to happen to the unregulated delivery market? But a lot of cities are definitely, uh, attempting to regulate and require permits and licenses for delivery services.
Do you have any questions, Mr. John?
Chris, what about mail order?
You know, I don't think that, uh, right now, actually, that would be a violation, I would believe, of, uh, clear federal law, which brings up a whole different issue of, um, the federal laws, which, uh, I've talked about in some of the other presentations, but, um, the mail is run by the federal government and the Controlled Substances Act, uh, has marijuana as a Schedule I substance, so, um, I would, uh, not recommend that, uh, folks use, uh, the, the mail for marijuana deliveries.
I guess the, uh, the follow-up question?
Yeah, well, I guess the question is, um, so, is there an express prohibition in, in the California state law? Now, I know across state lines, it's an issue, but within California-approved law, um, you know, um, mobile units can go from county to county, um, and cross those lines, and I'm thinking, you know, the, the online buying that, um, might come into the marketplace, is that considered at all, or would that be expressly something if the city wanted to not, uh, get involved with and not allow, that specifically should speak to banning that?
I don't know of any city that has, uh, attempted to regulate the use of the US Postal Service or, or the, or the mail for marijuana deliveries. Um, the new definition of delivery and for, and retail sales for the state does include technology platforms, but my understanding of the way the businesses usually operate is that, uh, you know, someone can go online and put an order in, but then it's delivered physically to them through a van or someone walking up to wherever they're at. I don't think that the city would get much traction out of regulating, uh, the mail, and I would be concerned about there being, um, some federal preemption issue, too. Um, I could look further into it if the city was interested, but, um, that's not an issue that I've heard, uh, there'd be much concern about at the local level.
Thank you.
Um, so, deliveries, uh, interestingly, starting in 2018, are actually going to have to be, uh, occurring through a licensed business. Uh, either a licensed retailer, uh, a licensed micro-business, which is basically a combination small cultivation, uh, delivery, uh, retail sales and manufacturing. A micro-business is the 20th of the 20 licenses. Or a nonprofit. Now, right now, the state's still developing exactly what they mean by a nonprofit. But the point is, is that if you're going to be delivering lawfully in 2018, you're going to need to be associated with one of those license types. And so, that's why I have up here on deliveries will be legal with a state retail dispensary license or one of the other two types. Uh, the Subcommittee recommendation is to allow medical marijuana delivery services subject to a regulatory permit, uh, to regulate the delivered edibles, um, the same recommendation that there be heightened scrutiny, scrutiny and attention to edibles that are sold, make sure that the delivery services follow those regulations, and to prohibit the recreational or adult-use marijuana deliveries in the city. So, I've talked about the, uh, two areas of personal marijuana use that the city has some local control over, uh, public smoking and personal cultivation. And then I've talked about the four different main commercial businesses the city can regulate, allow or prohibit. I've talked about the Subcommittee's recommendations in all of those areas. And now that brings us to a timeline for action. Uh, the goal is to develop with council direction a new marijuana ordinance by the end of the year. Uh, and there's a proposed timeline as follows to accomplish that. Um, possibly have another community workshop on exact details of a new marijuana ordinance by the end of August, early September. Um, and then the goal would be for there to be a first reading of a new proposed marijuana ordinance by late September, early October. And this all revolves around the deadline of having a second reading done at the November 14th meeting. Uh, that will be the last meeting in November that's scheduled, regular meeting for the city council. And then, of course, an ordinance needs 30 days to be enacted, so if we're going to have one on the books by December 31st, then we would want to have a second reading by November 14th. That doesn't have to be done that way. Uh, the city council, of course, could pass a moratorium on all of these businesses being lawful in the city to allow more time to develop regulations and then lift the moratorium in the new year when an ordinance is developed. So, um, if the city would like more time developing its ordinance, we don't have to stick to this second reading on November 14th. But that would be the goal, to have something done by the end of the year. Which now brings me to, uh, an itemized list of the Council Marijuana Subcommittee recommendations. Now, I would suggest that the council discuss these at the, uh, next scheduled, uh, agenda item at the regular meeting. Uh, so no action is taken today, uh, at this meeting, but rather would be taken at the next meeting. So, um, I'll just read through these and then that will conclude my presentation, and then we'll revisit these at, uh, the regular meeting. So in summary, the Council Marijuana Subcommittee recommends for public use, uh, smoking regulations, maintain current smoking, uh, prohibitions, consider tightening up some of the exemptions. For personal outdoor cultivation, prohibit. Personal indoor cultivation, regulate as follows. Uh, have some local health and safety regulations, uh, especially odor control and security. Require a local permit, it's non-transferable. Uh, charge a nominal fee for the permit. Require a property owner consent and have a one-time inspection to make sure the cultivation sites compliant with local law. Um, that compliance would be, for example, making sure that there isn't more of an, more of an electrical draw from the grid than, than is appropriate for, um, that unit. Uh, make sure that if it's close quarters, like maybe an apartment building, that there's an odor control system so the neighbors don't smell the plants. When marijuana is ready to be harvested, i.e. it blooms, it can create a very strong odor that many people find offensive. Um, so odor control is a big issue. Uh, fourth, on dispensaries, the Subcommittee recommends allowing two medical marijuana fixed-location, not mobile dispensaries. Uh, reasonable requirements on those retail outlets. Uh, seek development agreements with the operators and impose, um, local regulations on marijuana edibles. Something to discuss is, if the city does allow only two marijuana dispensaries, medical, the question is, is how does the city determine who gets those two licenses? Uh, there are a number of different ways of doing that. Uh, one is a lottery. A second one is first come, first served, whoever gets their application in first, which obviously, uh, is, is prone to be inefficient. Third way is to have some sort of discretionary criteria where you have applications screened to see if they meet the minimum standards, and then if you have more than two, by a certain deadline, they go to a reviewing body, which could be the city council, which would have set criteria to evaluate them on to determine which two actually get permits. But if the city is going to limit the number of dispensaries while allowing some, it should consider how they distribute those two permits. Five, dispensaries, recreational prohibit. Subcommittee recommends for commercial cultivation, both medical and adult use prohibit. Manufacturing and testing prohibit. And then allow medical deliveries, but it's going to require a local permit, and have some reasonable requirements such as insurance, background checks on drivers, have proof of association with a lawful dispensary, either in the city or elsewhere, and prohibit recreational deliveries. So that concludes the presentation for this afternoon's agenda item. I'm open for any further questions, and I'll turn it back to the mayor.
Okay, great, thanks. With that, we can open it up for questions from council, and our, maybe our subcommittee might want to help us with that, and then we'll open it up. I have some speaker slips, and I'll open it up for public comment. So we want to start with any questions from council, and I'll look to my left. Marla?
Well, I just have a couple. I mean, we were asking them as we went along, so I don't really have a lot of additional questions here. One question I have is if we were to permit outdoor personal cultivation, so for people who want to use it, would we be able to regulate that as well?
Yes.
Okay, so we could set up regulations. And as I understand it, the law actually reads that citizens are allowed to have up to six plants, either indoor or outdoor, so it could be a combination. Is that also correct?
It is correct that the default is you can grow six plants at your personal residence in any combination of indoor/outdoor.
Okay, good, that's what I thought. And with respect to the development agreements, how long would that typically take? Can you make some kind of an estimate?
It could take anywhere from a few months to a year for your typical development agreement to be negotiated with.
So it just depends on who's negotiating and how tough they are?
Yes. And a development agreement has to be approved as an ordinance by the city council, which means that it takes a little bit longer at the end than just your typical contract. But it depends on how long the negotiations take.
Okay, thank you.
Red?
Chris, you said earlier that we cannot require a development agreement. So how do we get one if a property owner doesn't want to enter into a development agreement?
There's two ways. One, the city is offering to the property owner something in consideration for entering into the development agreement. Typically, the city will say that the local land use regulations will remain the same. They'll guarantee they'll remain the same for five, 10 years, 20 years out. Second, if the city were to have only a limited number of, say, dispensary permits available, then one of the criteria for who gets the permits could be financial benefits to the city, which could be realized through development agreement.
Okay, thanks.
Matt?
I have a question for you, Chris, and also for Marla or Red. I don't know who would like to answer it, specifically about not allowing manufacturing and testing. I know when we had talked about this in the last few months, cultivation, large-scale commercial cultivation for medical or recreational, we could understand because we were limited space-wise for the city. But I don't know if you guys could explain why the committee did not go for the manufacturing and testing? I don't know who would like to answer that.
I'll turn that over to the policymakers.
Marla?
Well, I'd be happy to take a stab at it. I think we felt that we are just a little community, and we really didn't want to become known as the place, the pot city on the central coast, that we really don't, we're maybe too small to consider that type of business in our community. Much like cultivation, you really need the space for that, you need the size, you need, you know, other things that we don't really have here. And I think we were just trying to recognize what are the needs of our community, and how do we balance that with public safety? And we don't really need to go to the manufacturing and testing.
Red?
Yeah, with regard to manufacturing, there are two kinds of manufacturing. One involves volatile fuels, and we definitely don't thought that that would be a safety And the other, you know, I agree with Marla. As for testing, I reached out to a couple of local cannabis businesses and met with representatives yesterday to get from them a reaction to our staff report. And I've given council members my notes from that meeting at the beginning of tonight's meeting, and those notes are also on the back table. And one of the, one of the recommendations from the cannabis people is that there is no reason to prohibit testing in Morro Bay, particularly because according to the people I spoke to, we have two Morro Bay residents who currently operate testing facilities, not necessarily within the city, but we do have the local expertise to perform testing. So that may be something that we want to talk about at our 6 o'clock meeting.
Okay, anybody else? John?
First question I had, Chris was the earlier question, and that was the regulation of extracted CBDs that are contained in other products other than quote-unquote cannabis itself, absent the Delta-9 THC. So not having the psychoactive component, but most of the medicinal activities come from CBDs that have a number of physiologic effects. Those products are being sold as herbal supplements now. And my question to you is, are those included, or would those be included in the regulations that we're developing for the city at this time?
They could be. I would need to do some more research on the exact dividing line between how the state defines what is medical cannabis that must be sold at a state-licensed medical retailer, medical cannabis retailer, as opposed to side products that are so removed from what the state considers to be the medical cannabis that it's not even regulated. So depending upon how broad the state definition is, whether it captures these products that are being sold already at health food stores, and they should be sold at a dispensary, that would be easy enough to just say, you got to follow state law. If we wanted to go further than state law, we could do that, but that becomes even more of a complicated, I think, task for a local government to pursue. But I'll look into that further.
And the only other question I had was part eight, deliveries. The way I understand the recommendation, if I read it correctly, is that not only would there be two storefront, or the recommendation is two storefront medical marijuana dispensaries that could deliver in town, but then any other licensed entity that might exist outside of town could also deliver within the community. Would that be correct? And there would be no limit to that? Is that the recommendation?
That is correct.
Yeah, we did, we did talk about the issue of should we limit the number? And we realized that there didn't seem to be a very good reason to do that if, in fact, they are licensed and you know that they're legal.
Thank you. Okay. Everybody get their questions, and then I've got, I'll go to public comment. I guess a couple of my questions on cultivation, and I, Red, thanks for the notes on this, it's good information. Some of my questions for indoor cultivation, considering some of the ordinances that may be in place, as an example, garage. So necessarily would need a permit to convert a garage into a living space, so would we allow a garage to be converted into a cultivation? And, you know, that's a question in consideration in what we would be allowed to do that. And then what would be the limits on indoor cultivation as far as living space? I mean, I voiced some comments about, you know, some concern whether or not, you know, with affordable housing, you know, it's seems a little bit more, does it open the door for prevalent use of indoor grow, and thereby that seems to be more profitable than for, you know, sharing a house, or roommate, or whatever? So what are limitations on indoor cultivation restrictions, or regulation, I should say?
Well, taking the first issue of a garage, actually, the law specifically says that personal residence or accessory structure. And so under Proposition 64, you have the right to grow six plants either in the personal residence or an accessory structure. It is not entirely clear what they mean by accessory structure, other than, obviously, it's not the living space. So I think what's envisioned by that is, you know, obviously greenhouses, but it could be a garage. If it's an accessory structure, Prop 64 says it must be locked, and what's being grown inside of it can't be visible to the public.
But we could regulate whether it be prohibited in a garage?
Yes, I believe so. As for the issue of, it sounds like the concern is whether or not homes would just be used for growing instead of people living in them. I have seen some cities, for their indoor regulations, make it a requirement that there be basically living quarters, where there's a functioning kitchen, there's functioning bathrooms, you know, that there's basically, it's being used as a personal residence in addition to growing. Without a court clearly weighing in on it, I think that would be reasonable, because the very nature of a personal residence is that someone resides there. So to just enforce the very term itself, I don't think would be problematic. So other cities have had that exact same concern and are putting in requirements.
Okay, great, thanks. Without any other questions?
Could I, well, I just follow up on that question. I'm assuming that if someone were actually growing plants in a structure that they weren't living in, they would be attempting to sell it, and that would be illegal, correct? Because this is just for their own personal use?
Yes, actually, that's a very good point, that the six plants that one can grow for personal use cannot be commercially sold. You can give them away to people, but you can't sell them.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thanks, Marla. All over for public comment. Red?
Is that six plants per person or six plants per residence?
Per residence.
Okay. Great, thanks. For public comment, I've got four speaker slips. So first up, Carol Trewsdale. And if there's anybody else for speaker slips, bring them on up, please, that'd be great. Thank you. You can bring them on up to Chris, he'll take them. Thank you.
My name is Carol Trewsdale. I've been here since 1995, and I want to compliment Councilman McPherson and Robert Davis for being part of the subcommittee. The staff report that they generated was very, very interesting. And I also want to thank Chief Allen for his report. It's a lot of information to assimilate. The decision that council makes tonight is very important because it sets a precedence moving forward for the rest of the people that reside here in Morro Bay. So all the time and energy that everybody has given to make these new ordinance is really important, and I want to personally thank you, and I hope the decision is made is the right one. So thank you.
Thanks, Carol. Adam Pentress, and then Megan Souza.
For the record, my name is Adam Pentress. I'm a resident of Marina, California. I want to first thank the council members and city staff and everybody here for being a part of this process and having such a robust dialogue. The first item I want to address is testing labs. As was discussed to some extent, it's a minimal burden, both in terms of inspections and public safety, so there isn't really any drawback to allowing them. And they are critical for quality control and consumer safety. The company I work for, Ethnobotanica, is not seeking either of those, either manufacturing or testing licenses, but we just feel that that's very important for the safety of consumers and the quality of the product. And the states will be very closely regulating and certifying these testing labs, so that's even less regulatory burden on the local level for you. Also, in terms of record-keeping, because there is some addressing of record-keeping requirements in the staff report, the state is implementing very rigorous seed-to-sale tracking requirements. And so I would urge this council to avoid redundancy or superfluous regulation in that regard, and instead just, you know, ensure the mandate that licensed businesses are following the state code in terms of that seed-to-sale tracking, and that those records be made available to the city. That would, you know, streamline things. Edibles and packaging, similarly, the state is developing very strong regulations on that subject. In addition to the warning symbol and opaque packaging that was already covered, the state is developing requirements likely to include child-proof packaging and clear labeling in terms of potency. So those are a couple little things. More importantly, I feel that the zoning recommendations in the staff report need to be reexamined. Grover Beach initially imposed similarly restrictive zoning in their ordinance, and has since expressed regret for doing so. Real estate speculation and inflation became a problem in Grover Beach. Some existing businesses had their rents raised or were evicted altogether to make room for cannabis businesses. And we do not feel that this is a good way to start off our relationship with the community by, you know, inadvertently booting somebody else out of their commercial space. We don't want that. So I urge the council to consider expanding zoning to include industrial, at the very least, both to mitigate volatility in real estate and to give us the option to revitalize derelict buildings and unused storefronts. Many cities have allowed and even preferred cannabis businesses operate in industrial zones in order to be less obtrusive to the minority of the population that doesn't like it. So we'd like to respect everybody here and be good neighbors, and we feel that that's best done by selecting a storefront in an industrial area out of the way, and also to use that as an opportunity for some revitalization of that, of that kind of area. Sorry, was that three minutes?
Yeah, yep. Okay. All right, thanks, Adam. Megan Souza?
Thank you.
And then Eric Powers?
Thank you very much. I'm not much for public speaking, so I'm just going to read directly from my script here.
AGP, can you turn up the mics a little bit for us out here? Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Megan, and my partner, Eric, and I, who's speaking next, are commercial cannabis cultivators, as well as operators of a local delivery service, Megan's Organic Market, since 2013. And we serve all of Slow County, but the majority of our customers are in Morro Bay because there is such a high concentration of cannabis users in Morro Bay. And I want to make, use my time to make a case for adult use. Firstly, I read the staff report, and I want to start by saying, in future city documents, I hope that the council and the staff will use cannabis instead of marijuana, and adult use instead of recreational, because word choice matters. For example, a recreational cannabis user would suggest someone who uses cannabis just for fun, where in actuality, so many quote-unquote recreational users are people who need cannabis for legitimate medical illnesses, but who either don't want or can't afford to pay the fees for a medical license, or who are uncomfortable talking to their doctor about cannabis, or who don't want to be listed in a centralized database as a cannabis user, or any other number of other reasons. Also, many quote-unquote recreational users consume cannabis as an occasional sleep aid or for post-exercise muscle recovery, or arthritis pain relief, things that they think might not qualify them as a medical user. So instead, let's call them adult users of cannabis, and let's allow adult-use delivery services and dispensaries in Morro Bay. It's what the citizens of Morro Bay have been asking for in overwhelming majority over and over, including at the public workshop in June, which was hosted by the subcommittee with the purpose of discovering what kind of regulatory framework the citizens want. And they were very clear, they want adult use. And I think that especially since come 2018, when stricter requirements for obtaining a medical license for personal consumption are implemented, the number of medical license holders will dramatically decrease. holders will dramatically decrease, and the number of non-recreational adult users will increase as people can't afford to pay the dramatically higher price of a state-issued versus a doctor-issued, like it currently is now, medical license, and the requirement for being listed in a centralized government database as a cannabis user goes into effect. Furthermore, allowing only medical and not adult-use delivery services and dispensaries in Morro Bay will severely limit the amount of revenue the city can make off cannabis sales, since consumers will just hop on over to the next beach town, which does allow adult use. And the city council might not be aware that Morro Bay is already a cannabis tourism destination and has been for some time. We, at Megan's Organic Market, we do a lot of business with people from the Central Valley and elsewhere who come to Morro Bay for our superior products and for-
I have to ask you to wrap it up.
Last sentence here, and for the atmosphere of cannabis retail, which local services like us and Ethno, which Adam works for, have worked hard for so many years to cultivate.
All right. Thank you, Megan. Eric Powers? And then Cynthia Gonzalez? Is that right? Okay.
Hello. My name's Eric Powers. I'm one of the CEOs of Megan's Organic Market here. Yeah, I wanted to, I was kind of wondering why we ended up recommending only two dispensaries for Morro Bay. It seemed that more would foster better competition and would be more appropriate for the consumption needs of the community. When the public comment meetings were being held, seemed five to 10 was more of what the public was interested in. Perhaps somewhere between two and 10 would be better. Yeah, so I'm just kind of wondering why it seems like the public comment wasn't giving much weight in a lot of the subcommittee's recommendations here. Another two, another thing that wasn't mentioned, with Senate Bill 94 that was passed, it allows a brick-and-mortar shop that exists solely as a delivery service and never opens its doors to the public. This is the type of licensing that the city should really be considering, because that's kind of the way things are operating currently. And then that way, these delivery services can come under the same regulations and compliance requirement as any storefront without creating the public nuisance potentially of parking, you know, having the retail outlets, having the public being given access to that. So it's definitely something you should consider, especially too, since all the delivery services currently operating in the county are going to need these brick-and-mortar locations to operate from. And if they're all based in Morro Bay and doing business over the county, all that tax revenue could come back to the city. So yeah, I think that's really important to look into. Two, I wanted to mention, a lot of our customers, as far as cultivating their own medicine, it's really the, the most impoverished and sick individuals who grow their own medicine. And cultivating indoors is expensive, between the electric bill, the amount of equipment needed for startup, and then of course, the routing fees being required, that's going to make it even more challenging for these citizens to effectively get their medicine produced by themselves in an affordable manner. A lot of people are currently cultivating outdoors. I'd say there are several dozens, little tiny, small, four or five plant gardens in the city of Morro Bay currently. And, you know, I think we can kind of imagine that the amount of complaints now will be similar in the future, and we can kind of deal with the complaints from neighbors on a case-by-case basis, perhaps setting up a fence with a lock, just keeping it out of view. Some sort of way to allow the affordable outdoor cultivation to take place for these people who need it. Yeah, and then two, just cultivating indoors again, being expensive. And it does, it would require inspection. We need to make sure that people aren't creating water and electricity issues, that they're not overrunning their, you know, their circuits and creating fire hazards. So, you know, there's definitely conversations to be had there. Well, thank you.
Thank you. And then Cynthia Gonzalez?
My name's Cynthia Gonzalez, and I'm one of the founders of Elite Care California. And I can honestly say I'm very proud to be standing in front of you as the first legal company to have received a permit in the city of Arroyo Grande. We are a delivery service, and we are strictly focused on the medicinal aspect of the industry. We have chosen not to participate in the adult use from any standpoint, and when we were in San Francisco, we made that a promise, and we found that there's just that much more of a greater need. Some of the things that we talked about, I know that it was just shared with Megan's Organics about Section SB 94, which is really important, because we're complying with the regulations now, as many of us in the delivery space are doing, in preparation for that January 1st, 2018 licensing opportunity. For those of us that have continued to meet with Lori Ajax and the committees there from the state Capitol, we have been very proactive in making sure that even all the vendors, all the products that we carry already have the safety measures in them, they're already childproof, they have the identification on there. So we only solicit those type of products. We're a little bit different anomaly than most of the deliveries, because we don't grow any of our own products. We outsource and only utilize vendors that have the highest level of medicinal properties within the products that we carry in our delivery. And one of the things that did come up about the CBD, CBD is a really interesting concept, and I could spend weeks discussing it with, with many of you, but it's one of the biggest concerns why we really want to enforce that every single product becomes a testic product. The CBE aspect is being presented as the most safest, easiest concept of medicine out there in the cannabis industry, but the biggest concern that most of us have that are using the plant is that a lot of these products that are coming into our helm, even found here in the county, are being outsourced. The CBD, the oil itself is being outsourced from China and Russia. It has high levels of toxin and has high levels of metal. So if you introduce that into a patient who's utilizing that form of medicinal attribute to help with their cancer, you've now just escalated that cancer. So it's a very, very serious subject, so I would really encourage you to support, you know, the testing procedures and make sure that they, that what you, the laboratories that you do bring in for the county, that they have an all-encompassing offering of the types of testings that they're going to be doing, not just for the THC levels, not just for the potency factors, but for the nature of the actual origin of the products themselves, so that they are indeed some of the safest that will be distributed here in the county. We thank you again for your progressive concepts and mindset about moving this idea forward, because it's true, there are so many patients that are in need of this service, and it is a great complementary alternative type of medicine, and we're certainly seeing some great case studies and improvements in people's health overall. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Cynthia. Appreciate everybody's comments. That concludes all the public comment speakers that I have. Just looking out in the audience, anybody for a public comment? Anybody else after this? Just, okay. Just want to make sure. Thanks.
Hello, my name's Louis Valencia. Used to be a resident of Los Osos for three years, when I had a delivery service in 2012. I retracted back to the valley. I work with A1 Collective, they're a collective out of Madera, Madera County in the Central Valley. We recently went to Hemcon, and I want to reaffirm the testing portion of that, of the regulations. And the reason why is there's over 480 components of cannabis in the, in the structure. And many of them are known for, there's actually patents on them. If you Google patented of cannabinoids, there's certain patents that the Department of Health actually do have pertaining to cannabinoids. I also, to answer one question of the non-volatile solvents and combustible, it's actually state regulations, they put into MRSA at one of the BMCR meetings that I attended with, I was able to speak with Lori Ajax for, for quite some time, and they definitely elaborated on the solvent side as far as combustibles and whatnot, and that's not going to be allowed. So it's going to be non-solvents, non-volatile solvents, so that shouldn't be an issue. And what I've seen in other ordinances, in many municipalities that I've seen passing ordinances as far as regulations for the residents in an indoor setting, limiting the amount of lighted, light wattage to, some ordinances I've seen to 1,000, 1,000 watts, and therefore you can't really grow excess amounts of cannabis with 1,000 watts, and, especially with only six plants. So I just wanted to speak a little bit on behalf of those points that the council did want to be a little bit more informed on. And we do have a business proposal that's set in Grover Beach currently, and we do have two facilities that we have put leases on, and hoping to get cannabis-related entities set up for cultivation and as well as a dispensary. So we are looking for, I've lived here for, this was my hometown, and I retracted to further progress in the cannabis industry, and I would love to bring this back to Morro Bay. So, I guess with that, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Louis. And with that, that'll conclude our public comment, and we'll close public comment and bring it back to council. And I'll look for our subcommittee members to maybe lead off in discussion. Red, you want to lead us in a discussion on this, and then we can start from there?
I think what I'd first like Chris to do, to just respond to one of the public comments about what's required for medical marijuana users, because I think there is some misperception about that. It would be helpful if you would just clarify that.
Sure. So medical marijuana purchases are not going to require a state-issued medical marijuana ID card. It's not required now, and it's not going to be required in 2018. What will be required is that if a purchaser wants to be exempt from the state sales tax, they're going to have to show a state-issued ID medical marijuana card. However, Proposition 215, which was passed by the voters in 1996, it basically says that Californians have the right to medical marijuana on a doctor's recommendation, and you don't have to have a card. Now, there is a state law that requires counties to issue medical marijuana cards, but they're voluntary. The state also issues them as well. Hardly anybody has ever bothered to get one, but they will start getting them in 2018 when they can be exempt from sales tax. However, you're not going to be required to have one to purchase medical marijuana in 2018.
As of right now, you are required to have a doctor's prescription, correct?
Yes, doctor's recommendation, to be clear. It's a federal violation to prescribe cannabis, but doctors have a First Amendment right to recommend it.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else, Marles?
Well, I just wanted to clarify that, clarify that point. I'm not sure how we want to proceed here in discussion.
Yeah, let's talk about that for a minute. So, you know, we don't have an end time on this meeting, but typically on our special meeting study sessions, we've kind of given us a 5:30 stop time in order to have a little recess before a council meeting, and just want to ensure that council wants to stick to that, which only leaves us a few minutes. We do have the ability, obviously, it's on our regular council meeting to get, we're going to continue this discussion to have, to discuss what our actions and recommendations might be. So, you know, we can just have a brief discussion on that, and understanding that we're going to continue the discussion on the city council, at the city council meeting starting after 6 o'clock. Any further comments? I'll look to Red.
Yeah. Chris, can you talk a little bit about the association of delivery with a dispensary effective in 2018? And you said nonprofit or a licensed dispensary or a microbusiness? And so I guess my question would be that, how do you define a microbusiness? And particularly, let's use Megan's Organic as an example, where the company cultivates, processes, and delivers. Does that qualify as a microbusiness?
The microbusiness is the 20th license type that will be available, and it is basically to allow one operation to cultivate small amounts, to deliver the marijuana, to conduct retail sales, and also manufacture. And so I believe it's 10,000 square feet or less of cultivation space. So I would think that Megan's Organics, unless they have a very large cultivation site, would qualify for a microbusiness license, and that would just be one license to cover their different operations. In regards to deliveries, in 2018, part of what SB 94 and Prop 64 and then MRSA before those has been attempting to do is to require all commercial cannabis activities to require a state license. The state is going to consider deliveries of cannabis a commercial operation if you're delivering for compensation. And so deliveries have to be associated with a licensed business. That licensed business can be either a retailer, a microbusiness, or it can be a nonprofit. My understanding is right now, the state is still developing exactly who can qualify as a nonprofit. The legislation right now that's on the books talks about the state developing different criteria for a nonprofit that qualifies. But suffice to say that if somebody is delivering commercial, if somebody's delivering cannabis and they're taking money in exchange for it, they're going to need to have some type of a license to do that. As one of the public speakers mentioned, SB 94 expressly recognizes that a retail license, a dispensary license, can be just for deliveries. You can have a storefront that's, you can, you can have a business operation that is not open to the public, where you just do deliveries through, you know, motor vehicles. So if somebody's operating just a delivery service, they're going to need to get at a minimum a state license, starting in 2018, of some type, or be associated with somebody that has a state license.
Okay.
Well, as regards nonprofits, could the Morro Bay Friends of the Library develop a delivery service?
Maybe.
Okay, so-
Those would be some fun friends, I guess.
So we're coming up on 5:30. Just want to, you know, kind of pull the council on, you know, an end time for this portion of our meeting, or if we want to keep going, just a few minutes to cover some questions and things like that, so.
So I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank the, again, the subcommittee for their time in putting this together. I know that was a tremendous amount of work. And also, Chris, for your work and background information, I do appreciate that. My desire would be to debate and make recommendations at the regular meeting, which would be the appropriate time, rather than debate and not be able to take action now, because we'll lose content. So that'd be my recommendation.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? We get consensus on that? Okay, good. So with that, we're right at the 5:30 mark. We could, unless there's any other comment, closing comments, we can go ahead and conclude this. We're right, all right? Okay. All right, so we'll go ahead and conclude the meeting at 5:30, and we'll take a recess and come back at our regular city council meeting at 6 o'clock. Thanks very much.